So would you please all rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Miller?
Present.
Vice Mayor Slowey?
Present.
And Mayor Bruins?
Present.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and ATU verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, November 18th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of agenda, and I would just like to announce before we get to the consent calendar that staff is requesting to pull Consent Calendar Item 7 off of the agenda and continue it to a future council meeting.
Okay. When we get to that point, then we'll do that. Okay. All right, any other changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the caveat from our city clerk. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Next item is Presentation Number Four, Recognition of the Citrus Heights Women's Club for Contributing Toward the Citrus Heights Police Employee Wellness Training.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Gina Anderson, and I'm your Assistant Chief of Police, and I'm here this evening to introduce you to a very special group of members of our community. Here with me this evening is the President of the GFWC Women's Club Darla Bechner and members of the Women's Club organization. It would be easy to assume that those who enter the public safety profession know the stressors and the challenges that they will face in the job and that they're prepared for it, but the mental and physical health of the men and women who put themselves in harm's way every day should be a matter of concern to all of us. Their health is not only critical to their on-the-job performance, but also to their individual safety and the collective safety of the people who they serve to protect. The GFWC recognizes the need to take a holistic approach to the health and wellness of our public safety professionals and have, over the past three years, coordinated the Taste of Citrus Heights event to raise money to support the health and wellness training programs for our police personnel. Their program this year, 2020 Taste of Citrus Heights Event, will be held this year at our community center on April 24th, and to date, this group has raised over $20,000 to contribute to the mental health and wellness programs of the staff at the Citrus Heights Police Department. Their donations have allowed us to conduct some unique training opportunities in the area of emotional survival, personnel safety, what to expect after surviving a critical incident, and strategies to reduce, in the line of duty, injuries and in the line of duty deaths. They've also contributed resource materials to our existing police staff as well as all of our incoming police staff. We are very thankful for their support and all of their contributions, and Mayor Bruins, I understand that you have-
I do.
...a proclamation that you'd like to make.
It's nice to see so many familiar faces and old friends in this group of women. Want to thank you on behalf of the city council for all you've done and are doing for our police department. I'll say a few words of the proclamation, and then we'll get a group picture. So Assistant Chief Anderson spoke to many of the items on this proclamation, but I'd just like to note that the Citrus Heights Women's Club has provided police officer challenge coins to all of the department staff as a reminder that they are valued and supported by the members of the community, and that you continually remind us that there are those like you who care, and we know you do. I mean, you do it in everything that you do for us and for whom we are most grateful. We want to thank you for going out of your way to support our police department and for the many generous things you do in our community beyond this wellness program, because you have your hands in a lot of different things. And I think you're one of our longest, I was gonna say oldest, but I'll say longest-standing community groups that has supported the Citrus Heights community. So for that and all the other reasons that Assistant Chief Anderson mentioned, I'd like to state that it is therefore resolved that the city council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize you, the Citrus Heights Women's Club, for your contributions and your outstanding support of the Citrus Heights Police Department. Let's give them a round of applause. And then we're going to stand back here with the city council, please, behind us, and we'll get a picture.
Let's kind of center. She's got the right color shirt for that, right?
All right, one, two, three. Okay, everybody, ready? One, two, three. Beautiful. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to all of you who have you come and attend our event as well, and thank you very much for the kind words. It really means a lot. This is a good group here, and they're hard workers, and the Taste of Citrus Heights is no easy task. So we do our best, and we're glad that it's being used wisely and beneficially, because several officers have come up and even talked to me personally and said, "Thank you for doing what you're doing for us," and it feels really good, so thank you.
Thank you again. All right, one more round of applause as they leave. Thank you so much, ladies, for coming, and let's go on to our next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay. Ms. Middleton, would you like to start?
Oh, yes. Today, I was able to attend in place of Councilmember Miller the STA Board meeting, which we got into really deep discussions about the upcoming proposed ballot initiative for funding more of our infrastructure improvements, and we should have more information about that as of January 2020, so I'm sure Councilmember Miller will keep you updated. Thank you.
And thank you for attending for me. Appreciate it.
Of course. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Oh, let's see, well, Monday was Veterans Day, and most of us were all out at the Sylvan Cemetery for the celebration or remembrance, well, it's celebration, I guess, for vets at the cemetery, a great event. Tuesday, I was the only member there at the Chamber Lunch. That was rare, just to be the only one. And Wednesday morning, I was reported to Skycrest Elementary for principal for a day, and that was a total blast. I can't believe how smart these kids are, and I love interacting with them. I went into the fourth grade government class, and they asked me, "Which branch are we from?" And I think I further confused them, and the teacher had had to straighten it out after I left, because I said, "We pretty much do all three somehow," you know, judicial, legislative, and executive. And then later on that evening, went to the event at the community center, Meet Your Citrus Heights School, and it was very well-attended, and I heard parents asking the different principals about their programs and curriculum, so great start. I think we're gonna do that every year, and with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you very much. We won't meet again at the end of the month for the holiday, and then, so I wanted to encourage everybody to go out and support Toys for the Troops Kids. They will kick off their 17th Annual Toy Drive on December 7th. It will run through December 22nd, 10 to 6 every day, and it will be up in the shopping center next to Panera Bread. So please go up there. The toys that you donate will go to the children of our military members, so please do that. And the other thing is, I will not be at the December 12th meeting, I apologize. I will be attending my son's graduation from Marine Corps Boot Camp. Very excited.
Camp Pelton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slowey?
Thank you. So the Library Board did not meet this month, there wasn't anything on the agenda. I did want to give a quick update on CACOG. One, we have a special meeting this Monday in hopes of adopting the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. It's been kind of thrown in a little bit of a loop. Federal government, California today has a certain emission standard. The federal government came up with a different one, which basically put the California one to be nonexistent, so we're actually trying to adopt a plan that if we don't get it approved by the middle of next month, it could cause some problems, because California has to come up and write their new plan, and there's no way they're gonna get it done in 30 or 60 days. But if we can get this plan done by the middle of next month, we can use the standard, which technically doesn't exist anymore, but it's legally acceptable, and then we can come back and update it. The issue is, if we don't get the new plan approved, there could be some problems in terms of getting federal funding going forward, so more to come. Also, I wanted to give you a brief update on the city's RENA numbers, a very boring topic, except for those folks in, you know, planning and housing, but it stands for Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and the state government comes up with an allotment of how many units have to be built, and this is for lower-income units and higher-income units. And then they spread it out by population to different COGS, and in this case Sacramento Area Council of Governments oversees El Dorado, Sacramento, Placer, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba. And based on population, those six counties are supposed to build 153,000 and some change new housing units over the next several years. The reality is, you know, you can't make the developers do that, but our job as a city is, we get allocated a certain number out of that, and we have to make sure that our zoning will allow, if a developer can put together a project, that the zoning allows for our allotment to be built. So if you just look at Sacramento County, Sacramento County has 93,165 units. The good news, I guess depending upon how you look at it, Citrus Heights' number is 697. Now, again, the reality is, are we, over the next five to seven years, gonna build 697 units? Obviously, we aren't, you know, developers would have to come forward on that, but specifically, it's again broken down into very low-income, low, moderate, and above-moderate. I mean, that's how the law reads, and if you don't have acceptable numbers, or your zoning doesn't allow for the units that you've been assigned to be built, you could risk, you know, future funding, whether it be federal or state. So, you know, I don't want to get all excited about 697, but it's not a bad number, so we're kind of trying to keep it quiet that we're gonna accept the number and just move forward.
You're telling everybody, yeah?
I'm telling everybody, yeah. So, but again, you know, you don't know until you get that number, and it could have been a lot worse.
Yep.
So with that, the only other thing I would remind, since we're not meeting till the 12th, could be wrong, but is it the 5th? Is that our tree lighting?
Yep.
Yep.
Out front?
Thursday, the 5th.
Thursday, the 5th at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock?
Maybe earlier.
Maybe when it gets dark. Yeah, whatever. Okay.
Amy knows this stuff. Come on, Amy.
Okay, and I'll, I have quite a few, I'll go through them quickly. Did a lot of, had a lot of opportunity out in the community in the last couple of weeks, and starting with, was able to attend the staff meeting of Texas Roadhouse. Their owner, manager, is a resident of Citrus Heights, and so he's very interested in our history, so his senior staff came in and was able to give them a little bit of a story about how we became a city, and it's always a surprise to people who haven't heard it before. It was very nice. Many of us attended the Homeless Assistance Resource Team Heart Spaghetti Feed and helped them raise money by spending our money there. I had a meeting with General Manager of Republic Services, Tony Perez, and that's the company that provides our trash service, and so he just brought me up to speed a little bit about some of the upcoming laws, and many of us know that commercial laws require the separation of food waste. That is going to hit households in the next couple of years. We're gonna have to separate food waste and not put it in the trash, so if you aren't recycling it, not recycling it, but composting it or otherwise disposing of it, there's gonna be a new law on that. Able to attend a couple of dedications, one at Rush Park, they had a great workday there on Saturday, which was sponsored by Republic, and then earlier this week at Northwood Park, where they had a ribbon cutting for new playground equipment there. Last night, several of us were among the people that celebrated the service of longtime resident and co-founder of the city, if you will, Bill Van Duker, who was honored by Stones with their 21 Award, which they give out, this is the fourth year they've done it, to a citizen in the community who's gone over and above in contributing their time and their life to the city of Citrus Heights. And then we did have a sanitation board meeting, and first one this month. We took a look at our long-term financial plan, it's a very healthy district, and what that translates to you and me as ratepayers is that the SASD portion of it, which is the small pipes that connect to our homes, they have not had a rate increase in the last nine years, and doesn't look like they're gonna have one in the foreseeable future, and that's kind of unheard of for a utility. And then regional sand, which is the big pipes, as I say, because we have been able to get some very favorable funding for the big build-out of the wastewater treatment plant, we are not anticipating a rate increase on that side of it for the next 10 years, and so that's phenomenal for a utility of that size to be able to offer that to the ratepayers, so it's very good news. And as a result of that and other reasons, they won a Utility of the Future Recognition Award for this year, so we're very proud of that. And finally, from them, we are all going to be getting this in the mail, which has a little scraper inside of it, right here, to scrape our fats, oils, and grease, or more affectionately known as fog, into the trash and not down the drain, because that's the number-one reason our home drains get clogged, and we get a backup, what's called a backup enduro structure, and causes all kinds of problems we don't even want to imagine. And then finally, I attended the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting, and they are actively engaged in the renewal of their agreement to continue on, and they'll be taking that to their property owners to continue on for the next 10 years, is the cycle that they're looking for. And so that, I think, is all for me. All right, next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times. And at this time, I do not have any comment cards.
Okay. Any speakers? Okay, having not received any speaker sheets, we're gonna move on to the next item, please.
Next item is Consent Calendar Items 5, 6, and 8 for the council's consideration.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Consent Calendar Numbers 5, 6, and 8. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, it carries, and then we need a motion to continue Item 7, or is that-
We just pulled it off of the-
Okay, so it's been polled?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll move forward then.
Okay.
Okay.
The next item is public hearing, item number nine. The subject is Annexation of the Wyatt Ranch Subdivision into Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District 9802, Zone 4. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution annexing Wyatt Ranch Subdivision into Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District 9802, Zone 4.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Ardalyn Flores, I'm with the Engineering Division, and before you, this item is to approve the annexation of landscaping, for landscaping and masonry walls along Sunrise Boulevard for the Wyatt Ranch subdivision. We will be annexing it into one of our existing landscaping assessment districts, number 9802, and it'll be Zone 4 if it's approved. Wyatt Ranch is located on the west side of Sunrise Boulevard on a private road, Lawrence Avenue, which is just north of Sayonara Drive. On May 27th, 2014, Planning Commission approved the tentative map that created 23 single-family residential parcels. The developer agreed to annex the proposed landscaping and masonry wall along Sunrise Boulevard into one of the city's assessment districts to help relieve the future homeowner of Lot 17 from the responsibilities of maintaining the wall and the landscaping on their own. These features will be located within an easement along Sunrise Boulevard. On October 31st, 2019, the developer and the city entered into an agreement waiving the typical proceedings and consenting to the annexation of the city's existing assessment district, number 9802, as described in the California Streets and Highway Code, Section In accordance with the code, on October 25th, the city clerk mailed the public notice and ballots to the property owners, which set tonight's meeting for the public hearing for a city council to consider the proposed annexation. The public notice was also posted in the local newspaper on October 31st, 2019. City council is now asked to convene a public hearing to receive public comments for the proposed annexation, and upon closing the public hearing, the city clerk will open and tabulate the ballots received from the owners and report it to the city council.
Okay, I have a question for you. How many property owners are involved?
There will be 23.
And they're already, those are-
Oh, there's, currently, there's one-
One.
One property owner.
Okay, that was my, that was-
Correct.
It's one vote.
But, yes.
Right?
Right.
There's a lot of weight, I guess.
Okay, very good, all right.
So I just had-
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just so curious how it's gonna come out.
So the wall is basically, because there's several homes there now, right? And most of them are gonna be behind it. Are they tearing those existing homes out, or is it just on the one lot where the wall's gonna go?
The subdivision actually owns kind of like two parcels just adjacent to, closest to Sunrise Boulevard, and then there's existing homes on separate parcels, not part of the subdivision. They will remain.
So this would actually be north of those homes, equivalent of the length, if you will, of the lot.
Correct.
So it's very short. And I don't know if you can answer this, because this is a little off-topic, so it's a subdivision on a private road, or-
Well, once the subdivision is built, the road will be a public road.
Okay, so hopefully, as part of the conditions of the Planning Commission when they approve that, that private road will be brought up to the city standards before we accept it.
Yes, correct.
Okay, that was my bigger concern, because we've run into that before.
Yeah, it will be a private, public road.
What's the zoning of those houses?
I'm not quite sure. Do you guys recall?
Different apartment. Justify those fees, come on.
It's RD5.
It is RD5, okay.
Correct.
So this is five houses through the acre, then?
Correct.
Okay, it just looked like more when I bet, okay, and then it's kind of an odd-shaped, you've got the two houses on the road, and we're kind of relieving them from having to maintain that wall, and all the property owners, all 23 lots, will bear the cost of that.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So the wall is on Sunrise?
Yes, basically the portion front-
And then we're gonna put a sidewalk probably in front of it, right?
There's a sidewalk.
So we're gonna have one of those, no sidewalks either way, either direction, and just a little piece of sidewalk.
There is a sidewalk to the north of the development, to the north has a sidewalk in which we're connecting to.
So it'll be a continuous sidewalk, then?
In one direction.
From their parcel, from their parcel north? Oh, hi.
Mayor and council, your city engineer, Stu Hodgkins. Actually, this frontage sidewalk was built with our project last fall, the Sunrise improvements that we did there, so we now have continuous sidewalk all the way up the west side from Sayonara up to Loker, excuse me.
Oh, Loker, okay.
So we built this, we had an easement to build the sidewalk from this developer before we started constructing the sidewalk, so they're basically gonna finish the other improvements out on this frontage.
And they're surrounded by residential lots with Sayonara to the south of them, then?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any other initial questions from council? If not, I will open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open for any public comment. Would anybody like to come forward? Okay, I will close public comment. Call for direction from council.
Mayor, I will now open the one ballot that we've received-
Oh, yes, thank you. All right.
Tabulate.
For or against, kind of tells us what we- Yeah, we might not have to vote on that.
Yeah, exactly.
So it appears that staff, we've tabulated the ballots received and not withdrawn, and 100% were in support of the annexation of land to Assessment District 9802, Zone 4, and 0% were in opposition of the annexation of land, with ballots weighed according to the amount of the assessment to be imposed on the parcels for which ballots were submitted. Therefore, there is not a majority protest, and if the city council would like to take action, they are free to do so.
Move approval.
Thank you.
I had one question. I'll go ahead and second it. In the fees, is there a cost of living built into that?
There's an escalator, correct.
We don't get trapped with running out of money to maintain the-
All right.
Okay, thank you. I will say-
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number 10. The subject is 6400 Sunrise Boulevard Pizza Hut Request for Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity. The recommendation is to approve the letter of public convenience and necessity to allow the issuance of a type 20 alcohol license to Pizza Hut located at 6400 Sunrise Boulevard, Suite B.
Good evening, council. Allison Bermudas with the Planning Division. Tonight's request is a letter of public inconvenience and necessity, or PCN, as I'll call it, and as you recall, this is the process that we go through when business applies with alcoholic beverage control for a alcohol license, and ABC has made a determination that the location requesting the license is over-concentrated with licenses, or has a high crime rate, or whatever factors that they have, then they have that applicant, potential business come to us, and we have to approve that the issuance of the license. And under our code regulations, you're the approving body of this determination. So the application for you tonight is from Pizza Hut. Unusual that we have a restaurant here, normally we don't see restaurants, but in this case, Pizza Hut's requesting a retail license, which is the type 20, which will allow beer and wine in an off-sale, so that means the beer would be picked up and taken away from the site, so like a convenience store, grocery store, or something. So Pizza Hut is asking for a retail license, and the reason being that they get requests for beer to be delivered with the pizza. This particular location is a takeout or delivery location only, it's not a sit-down restaurant, so in theory, you could call Pizza Hut, get your pizza delivered, and in conjunction with your pizza delivery, you could request your beer. It is a beer/wine license, but they will only be offering beer, so that's why it's a retail license, and this is a restaurant that we're seeing, so I wanted to clarify that. It's a little bit different than what we've seen in the past. It's a little bit different than what we've seen in the past. Pizza Hut currently does this, and this is, I think, their thirty-fifth location. So it's becoming very popular and more commonplace. Application was sent... They were sent to us from ABC because their instance is, what were they called, Sinus Tract eighty-one-twenty. Eighty-one-twenty, ABC has said you can have three licenses in that area before they consider it over-concentrated, and that data comes from population data and residents and things like that, and they set that number at three. Currently, there are six licenses in the Sinus Tract. One recently you approved for the Easter's Catholic bookstore was the sixth one. Not too uncommon. This is a very heavily retail area. The Sinus Tract doesn't have a lot of homes, but it is very heavily retail, so that's typical to see the over-concentration of licenses. And you may be wondering about the delivery of beer, and yes, it is allowed. ABC does allow the delivery of beer. It actually is already occurring. Seven-Eleven has a process for which you... to receive your delivery of beer. Bevmo does, World's Roundtable does as well. So it does currently exist. And the steps that ABC has the businesses do is very similar in the delivery method as you do if you were in a retail store. The driver would appear at the door with your pizza and your beer, and they would ask for your ID. Your ID must match the person who ordered the pizza, and they must demonstrate that they're twenty-one or older. After that verification, then the driver would hand the beer over to that person. They cannot hand it over to somebody else. It must be the person that ordered it, that's been verified ID. They both sign a form. And then in the instance that the driver arrives at the residence, and there is not someone there that is twenty-one or older, or the customer that ordered the beer is not available, then they do not deliver, and they must complete a driver refusal form, which is an ABC requirement that Pizza Hut would then keep. Based upon our review, city staff looked at, along with the police department, there's no known issues from the other delivery platforms that are delivering beer. We haven't been made aware of any, and we felt that the process that Pizza Hut is requesting their methods that they have in place, their training, and that their product that they're offering, that there would not be an impact. So as staff, we are recommending your approval. And Pizza Hut is here, and they get happy to answer any technical questions or processing questions that you may have.
I have a couple of questions. Anybody else want to...
I had a quick one.
Okay.
Are the drivers required to be twenty-one as well?
I do not believe so. No.
But a sales clerk is at his store. Could you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Sure. It's not required. ABC does not require that they be... It's eighteen or older in that. Now, there are some cities or whatever that may require it. We have the capability, we have a program where we can only... where we would only be able to dispatch a beer order, an order that included beer to a driver that was over twenty-one. So it's available. We've yet to have that.
So with this delivery, you have proof that both the customer and the driver sign and brings it back, so...
Right, yeah, that's what she pointed out. And we have to... And as per ABC, we have to keep it for two years in our... within our premises.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's odd. That was one of my questions, too. That's... Thank you, sir. Yeah. My other question is, you mentioned a couple of other facilities that offer the same service, like Roundtable. Are any of them in Citrus Heights?
The Roundtable at Sunrise and Antelope.
They do deliver?
They do deliver. The Bevmo, a pair at Citrus Town delivers.
Oh, okay.
And last time I checked on the app, the Seven-Eleven on Antelope did as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else have any questions? All right, then I will... Oh, this is the public hearing, right? I will open the public hearing, and we've already heard from the applicant. Does anybody else wish to speak on this? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. And any other comments from council? Otherwise, I'll call for a vote.
Move approval of staff recommendation.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Cares. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number eleven. The subject is approval of the final subdivision map and subdivision improvement agreement for Wyatt Ranch subdivision. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the subdivision map and subdivision agreement for Wyatt Ranch subdivision.
Okay. Ardalyn, can you speak into the mic a little closer this time?
Okay. How's this? Okay.
Much better, yes.
All right. Mayor, councilmembers, this item is for the same subdivision that I was previously describing, Wyatt Ranch subdivision. And this is basically to approve the final map, in which typically with the subdivision map, the developer is required to install the public improvements prior to approving the final map. But there is an alternative to actually enter into a subdivision improvement agreement with the city and provide bonds for performance, payment, monument. And this is the route that the developer chose to take, so that they can record their map.
Okay.
So, Ardalyn, they haven't been out there pushing dirt around or putting utilities in or anything yet?
Not yet.
Got it.
And so the subdivision agreement basically outlines that they have a year to start construction and complete it. Otherwise, they ask, request an extension.
Okay. Any questions about this? Comments? Okay.
I'd move approval.
Second.
We have a motion... This is not... This is regular calendar.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Ardalyn. Cares. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, regular calendar, item number twelve. The subject is resolution adopting amendments to police-specific benefits. The recommendation is to approve a resolution adopting amendments to the police-specific benefits.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Rhonda Rivera, Administrative Services Department. The item before you this evening is an amendment to the currently existing police-specific benefits regarding education incentive pay for the non-represented sworn group at the police department. The first part of the recommendation is a change to the sergeant's level of education incentive. Currently, sergeants are participating in the executive management tier, which provides them a maximum of seven and a half percent for the education incentive, which includes the AAB, intermediate post certificate, and advanced certificate. Each one of those certificates, they're eligible to earn up to two and a half percent, to a maximum of seven and a half percent, with an additional two and a half percent if they have the master's degree, for a total education incentive pay, including the master's of ten percent. Staff is recommending to have the sergeants participate in the benefit tier more to the hourly staff. While sergeants are supervisors, they do not get to participate in the rest of the management layer benefits. So we're recommending that their education incentive pay match that of the officer classification. It's exactly the same levels of the education incentive for the bachelor, BA, intermediate post, and advanced post, so it's two and a half percent per certificate to a total of ten percent. But then it does have an enhanced master's degree incentive, which is five percent. So it would go up two and a half percent. The idea behind this recommendation is to encourage the higher education and advanced education, as well as to maintain our current benefit structure and to support retention. Another recommendation for the sworn benefit is the only classification currently in the police department that does not receive the police-specific education incentive is the classification of the chief of police. And so this recommendation does include the chief being added to that executive management tier of education. So again, that's seven and a half percent for the education, with an additional two and a half percent for the master's degree. Are there any questions?
Is there max... What's the maximum on that? Oh.
Seven and a half for education, and then the separate two and a half for masters.
Got it.
So any questions from the council? Before we take this to a vote, required by law to read the following statement. This item is a recommendation to approve adoption of an education incentive for the sworn non-representative classification of chief of police as follows. Maximum education incentive of seven point five percent based on the following. An AA or AS degree or equivalent, two and a half percent of base salary. Intermediate post, two and a half percent of base salary. BA or BS degree, two and a half percent of base salary. Advanced post, two and a half percent of base salary, with a separate education incentive for an MA or an MS degree of two and a half percent of base salary. Okay?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this item. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Next item, please.
Next item is number thirteen. The subject is recommendation to amend workers' compensation coverage to accept liability for off-duty peace officers injured out of state in limited circumstances. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution amending workers' compensation coverage to accept liability for off-duty peace officers injured out of state in limited circumstances.
And so, good evening, council. Rhonda Rivera, again. The recommendation is to bring the coverage afforded to our police officers in alignment with what's currently being offered by our risk pool carrier and our excess carrier for workers' compensation. And this is all in regards to a change that was made through AB seventeen forty-nine. That came out of the shooting that occurred in Las Vegas. There were several law enforcement personnel who were at that shooting incident and who responded and provided service. But because it happened in Nevada, and they were police officers in the state of California, they were not afforded any workers' compensation benefits, because the current... the law prior to the amendment specifically stated that it was for police or peace officer services that happened within the state of California. So in response to what happened with that shooting, there was a change, a bill that was introduced and amended and adopted, that it would allow a governing agency to extend workers' benefits to police officers who were to respond to a similar situation if it was outside of the state of California. And so it's taken a while, even though it went into effect in January. Before the city could take action on it, we had to have the public agency risk-sharing authority, who we are self-insured for workers' compensation, but we participate in their risk pool. They had to amend their memorandum of coverage, along with CSAC, where our locks, who we have our excess carrier through. All of those memorandums of coverage have been amended, so that we can now bring it forward to you for the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution extending workers' comp benefits to police officers under limited circumstances should they respond to a critical incident outside of the state of California.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
I just wanted, for the public's benefit, to maybe list the three bulleted items that we have. Or I could do it. Active shooter situation, active domestic terrorism, catastrophic events such as an earthquake, flood, or mudslide. Those are... Now, is that... I guess... Do they have to be asked to participate, or do they just... No?
They happen to be there at the time of it, and they respond.
And they respond.
Correct.
Okay.
And it has to be more of a mass incident. It's not just a single, typically one-on-one. This is for critical domestic terrorism is a good example.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Okay. No other questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
Do you have a statement to read?
Not this one.
Oh, okay.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Rhonda. Cares. Next item, please.
Next item is fourteen. The subject is resolutions adopting an amended salary table. There are two resolutions for council's consideration. Amending the salary table is outlined in exhibit A, and then amending the salary table is outlined in exhibit B.
Good evening, council. Rhonda Rivera, again. The item before you this evening is adopting two different resolutions to amend our salary table. As you remember, every time we had changes to our salary table, we were bringing forward the changes to the governing body for adoption. What we've started to do now is we'll try to bring up dates only twice a year, as we have made any changes based on either salary surveys, reclassifications, new positions that start into city service. So there's two different resolutions. The first one is adopting changes that have been made to the compensation and salary schedule since our last adopted salary schedule came before council back in, I think it was January of this year. One of the changes that's included with this salary table is an update to the general services director salary range. Several years ago, we combined the two positions of general services director and community and economic development director, and that was done by one person. And since that person has now retired, we've separated out those positions. And as we had told council at council's request, when we had combined the positions, that when we filled these positions, we would reevaluate the salary levels for each of these executive positions and bring it back to council, should there be any changes. The salary range for the general services director, because we had basically pulled that one from our salary schedule, it's being established at one forty-seven, one forty-six, fifty-two, to one ninety-four, six oh one, twenty-seven. And so that one is included in the salary table that's identified as attachment A. And again, that one also includes changes that have happened since January.
Okay.
And that one does require a reading.
Right. I have a thought. Any questions on that? Okay. Then I will read the statement required by law, which states this item is a recommendation to approve the salary range for the executive management classification of general services director. The salary range is one hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-two cents to one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars and twenty-seven cents. This classification will provide oversight to a department as determined by the city manager, and will participate in the same fringe benefits as other executive managers. Okay. Any questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve staff's recommendation and this resolution. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, it carries.
And the second resolution is taking that same salary schedule and adopting and incorporating a change effective at the end of December to incorporate the twenty-twenty minimum wage change.
Oh, yes. Okay, any comments on that?
Do we need a statement, or are we good?
Nope, we don't need a statement on that.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item fifteen. The subject is amending chapter thirty-eight of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code concerning fire prevention and protection. The recommendation is to introduce for a first reading and read by title only, and waive the full reading of the ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight, article two of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code relating to fire prevention and protection.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. Greg Anderson, chief building official. And with me is Krishana Fields, supervising fire inspector with SAC Metro Fire. So the Building Standards Commission publishes the California Code of Regulations every three years, and the California Fire Code is part nine of twelve of the California Code of Regulations. Sacramento Metro Fire District has requested the city adopt local amendments to this code based on local climatic, topographical, or geographical conditions, as defined in section thirty-eight dash thirty-five of the proposed ordinance. Staff recommends that city council introduce for first reading, read by title only, and waive the first full reading of an ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight, article two of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, to adopt local amendments to the two thousand nineteen California Fire Code as submitted in attachment one. There's no fiscal impact to the city by adopting as a result of this action. There's no fiscal impact to the city by adopting, as a result of this action. The need for adopting the 2019 California Fire Code by reference is to allow local amendments to the state code. Metro Fire has requested local amendments to this code, such as added cost to recovery fees, added violation penalties, added citations with bail schedule, reduced fire areas for all occupancy types in regards to fire sprinkler requirements, and changes to minimum fire flows and fire hydrants. The majority of the changes, as you probably see, there's quite a few amendments to this, the majority of those are carryover from the 2016 amendments, which we just did not too long ago in early '18. The Building Division supports the local amendments requested by SAC Metro Fire. To ensure the public is informed of all updated code requirements, the city and SAC Metro Fire have collaborated on educational efforts, including city website postings, informational handouts, and daily communication at City Hall on the front counter. If you have any questions regarding the amendments, feel free to ask. Hopefully, we can answer those.
Is there anything you'd like to add, or?
Hello?
I think so. I think just I would add that there are very minimal additions to this particular code. There's more that's been taken out of this code, because they have been incorporated in the state code.
Okay, so basically it puts us in compliance.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Any questions or comments from the council? All right, then I'll entertain a motion. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next item, please.
Next item is department reports, and there are none, next to city manager items, and there are none. Next is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Okay, do we have anything to offer? Mr. Daniels?
Just one. Looks like we have a scout in the audience, and I would like to ask if you could come up to the mic and tell us who you are and why you're here.
I'm Allison Mahoney, and I'm from TUP 86, and I'm working on my communications mayor badge.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Very good.
And we also have another student in the audience, and I'd like to ask him to come forward, introduce himself, and why he's here.
You know, we might have a few. I see some.
I know one for sure.
Some youngins in the back there, too.
Yeah.
They get extra credit.
My name is Logan March, and I'm here from Lewis Pasture Middle School. And instead of doing community service, I'm learning more about the government branches, and like city council branches.
Thank you.
Very good.
Anybody else? Any other students?
Got a couple in the back there.
Shy?
Come on. Come on up.
My name is Nathan Roach, and I'm here from Bella Vista High School, and it's a requirement in my government class.
Well, welcome.
Now you got proof.
My name is Aiden Roach, and I'm here from Bella Vista High School, and it's a requirement for my government class.
Very good.
You got off easy. You just had to report what your brother said. All right, thank you all for coming, and thank you for the students for coming forward and identifying yourself. If nothing else, no other business, we are adjourned.